One Live.
Good morning, recognizing a quorum of commissioners, I call the November 7th, 2024 meeting of the Cannabis Control Commission Order. This meeting is being held hybrid pursuant to Chapter 22, the Acts of 2022, and is being reported. Commissioners Camargo, Roy, and myself are participating in today's meeting. I don't expect any votes, but if we do take any vote, well, we'll take a vote to adjourn. Those will all be done by roll call. I will generally summarize our agenda. We will start with the public hearing regarding independent testing laboratories. I will ask that commissioners wishing to comment or ask a question during any part of the meeting, raise their hand to be recognized. First, some housekeeping guidelines for those wishing to testify, please add your name on the sign up sheet, which I believe is out in the hall. We will take testimony in order of how folks signed in. If there are any elected officials, not seeing any, but we would invite them to speak first. Sorry. First, we'll hear testimony from those who are in person before moving on to those who will testify virtually. Please be advised that when we are switching from to and from in person, I will request a brief recess before and after the virtual testimony concludes. In order to allow as many folks as possible to testify, we will be limiting testimony to three minutes. Speakers are invited to come to the podium at the front of the room, introduce themselves and what entity or organization that you represent. Speakers may be asked to follow up, maybe ask follow up questions at the discretion of my colleagues. The commission asks that speakers use respectful language. The commission encourages speakers to submit their testimony in writing as well. For those who cannot attend the public meeting in person, written testimony regarding independent testing labs may be submitted to commission at CCCMAS.com with the subject line Regulatory Amendment Testimony. Before we start, I want to make a few additional opening comments and certainly invite my colleagues to also. Again, I want to thank everybody for taking the time to participate in today's listening session on independent testing laboratories and relevant testing issues. We look forward to hearing your perspectives on ways in which we can work together to create a safer, more efficient testing environment in Massachusetts. I do want to thank my colleague, Commissioner Roy, for working with our team, Matt, Jessica, and Callie, our comps team and our operations team to pull today's listening session together. We've been doing these on a quarterly basis, and I fully expect we will tackle new topics with new listening sessions as we head into the new year. My time's up? All right. I will tell you, the commission continues to make improvements to our responsibility to oversee the testing requirements for the cannabis industry here in Massachusetts, including the cannabinoid testing bulletin we issued last fall, this week's duplicate sample bulletin. Our staff continues to work and meet with peer jurisdictions across New England, around the country, most usually through our interactions with the folks that are part of CANRA, which is kind of a national association of cannabis jurisdictions, and know some of the challenges facing us in this area shared by our peers in the region and nationally. These conversations have been helpful to us in terms of getting gathering perspective about issues as well as how regulators can find and support all of our marketplaces. Here in Massachusetts, to increase our effectiveness internally, we have expanded the commission's own testing team, increasing from one to five staff in recent years, and we are in the final steps of hiring our new, our next Director of Testing. More generally, the agency is working towards possible policy and regulatory changes relative to testing requirements for licensees, as well as greater transparency regarding our new open data, our, not new, but our open data publication of testing results. This week, we made several testing data sets available for the public's review for the first time, which you can review by visiting our data catalog within the open data platform at masscannabiscontroll.com. We're eager to publish additional data sets on a regular basis to encourage analysis and finding out ways in which we can enhance public health and safety of products and our regulated industry over well. Additionally, we have heard from independent testing labs and a host of recommendations such as that data transparency, and we want to hear from all marijuana licensees all across the industry and the supply chain, and hope that your input will be incredibly helpful to us as we consider potential challenge changes in the future. As you know, the commission is coming off a time-intensive regulatory rewrite of some of our rules around delivery, transportation of testing samples, micro business, craft marijuana properties, and our medical program. The agency is always considering improvements to our regulations. I know my colleagues are mindful also that when we tackle regulatory changes, it does require staff involvement across departments, and we hope folks can appreciate the time and energy they all provide in addition to their day jobs as to what resources are also needed, whether it's upgrading our tech platforms, drafting and writing new guidance documents, providing training to staff, implementing changes required by Chapter 180 continue to this day, and our team is still providing resources to support the industry and our municipal partners. One more note before we conclude. Contrary to some testimony you might have heard, the recent meeting of the Joint Committee on Cannabis Policy, the commission may and does test cannabis products via third parties to ensure health and safety and enforce compliance. Although there is no statutory requirement for the commission to test product, our regulations do allow us to take samples as needed. Obviously, the most public example of that was in 2019, 2020, during the Valley Crisis, which prompted the agency to test vaporizer products for the presence of toxics, toxicants, or contaminants, including vitamin E acetate. We're grateful. Our industry is currently supported by 13s operating ITLs and look forward to the day when we receive a license application for our first standards testing lab to help. But to that end, we're looking forward to today's hybrid listening session, hearing from all of you and stakeholders and speakers in this room. Finally, one final note. I'm excited to announce that our colleague, Commissioner Concepcion, reached out to me this morning and informed me she is returning to work tomorrow. So we're going to be happy to have her back and participating in these discussions. She was key to helping us organize the listening session we had with outdoor cultivators back in Great Barrington a few months back. And speaking for myself, I find these listening sessions tremendously valuable. So thank you all for being here this morning. With that, I am happy to turn it over to my colleagues. Commissioner Roy? I don't even need to go in alphabetical order if you want to go next.
Good morning, everyone. I am thrilled to be here today with all of you. I've been looking forward to this, and I'm looking forward to a very meaningful and highly productive conversation today. You as the independent testing labs, your role in the supply chain is crucial. It is so important. You are the industry safeguards of public health. It is your role to make sure that potency is accurate so that cancer patients, for instance, get the efficacious strength that they need. Your role is to make sure that products test with properly within the total mold and yeast threshold. So for instance, an asthma patient is not put at risk. Your role is to make sure that these products are free of pesticides or in our within the microbial limits so that a senior citizen or immunocompromised person is not put at risk. And for you, for that role is so crucial and so vital, what you do, and sets us apart from the legacy market, and that is why the regulated market is so important. And we are making strides, and we know there are issues in this industry with testing, and it's not unique to Massachusetts. It's nationwide. And you know, I have been advocating for changes for a long time around testing, and we're making some with the announcement of the open data portal will have potency in there. Right now, it is anonymized. I am pushing to get it un-anonymized because we have a lot of senior citizens, a lot of citizen scientists out there as well. And if someone is, how do I say this, not a bad actor, but not doing what they're supposed to be doing, it's going to come out in the data. I've also advocated for a standards lab, and some folks say, well, we just want open, we just want the open data. We don't want a standards lab. But it's not a binary choice. We can have both. We can have open data, and we can have a reference or a standards lab. Standardization is another thing we need to look at. So there are many things that we're doing. We're going to be making another announcement towards this and testing next week at next week's public meeting, which I think is also a step in the right direction. So I'm excited for today. I appreciate all of you that have reached out to me in different ways, and I'm grateful for that, and I'm grateful for your testimony today. And the other thing I've advocated for is quarterly meetings, and I think you're going to be getting them. So we had a meeting yesterday, and today was the first step, right, this listening session, but the goal is quarterly meetings to hear directly from all of you. So thank you for in advance for your testimony, and I look forward to all of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Roy. Commissioner Rick Martin?
Yes. Yeah, Commissioner Roy, did I miss a meeting yesterday?
I had it with INA.
Oh, okay. Good, good, good. So internally, we had a meeting. Oh, good, 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 good. Thank you. Good morning. I can't see everybody due to the poll right here, but yeah, I just want to thank everybody for being here. Quick survey, if you want to participate, how many of you work at a lab? How many of you own a lab? Okay, awesome. And any other folks outside of owning or working at a lab here? Okay, media? Okay, advocates? Great. Okay. All right. Awesome. I just wanted to see kind of like who's in the room and who's representing. So thank you so much. I would definitely say, I think some of our team is in the back. I can't really see them, but if you all can wave your hands back there, these are the folks that really make this commission work. I just want to say also for everybody who's testifying, you all work in this every single day. You know it in and out. Today's an opportunity to educate us as commissioners in terms of some of this work. Our team helps us to sort of translate some of this stuff that we may not understand at times, at least from me. And it's very important that I understand the type of policies that we're trying to change and vote on as a commissioner. So, you know, when you are giving your testimony, try to be as clear and direct as possible in terms of what you all want to see and how, you know, educate us. Just complete ignorance today on our part, right? So just educate us. And thank you for being here. It means a lot to us. And Commissioner Roy, thank you for hosting this and also just talking about, you know, quarterly having these with the industry. So thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, we will get started again. If there are any government or elected officials, you're certainly invited to go first. I don't see anybody raising their hand. All right, Jessica in the back gave me a thumbs down. That's more of an answer than opinion. Yeah.
Just say something really quick, just to the audience, you're going to see us typing. Just know that it's, know that we're not working. We're actually writing notes in terms of what you are saying, because I realize in some of these things, people testify, and we're like this. So just be mindful that we're writing notes.
Great point. We're not doing emails.
Yeah.
All right. Seeing no government or elected officials, I'll go down the list. First, starting with the folks who are here in person. Again, I invite you up to the podium. Betsy will start the three-minute timer. Introduce yourself, who you are here either representing or what organization or entity you work for. But we will start with Grant.
And when the bell goes off, that doesn't mean it's done. It means there's how many seconds left.
It is when the bell goes off.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Grant, whenever you want to start.
Good morning, Mr. Acting Chair Commissioners. Thanks so much for taking the time to hear my comments and for putting this together today. I have to be quick, and I will be leaving you. I apologize ahead of time for that. But let me just jump right in. So first, I'm a non-interested stakeholder. I'm just some guy that covers this stuff. And that is probably the most important part of all of this. There's an overlapping concentric social circle. There are overlapping concentric social circles of influence that have developed in the arena of testing oversight and testing and the implementation of all of these regulations that are inducing problems. And so non-interested stakeholders, I think, are a key component to all of this. I'll start off by saying that. The second thing is, I think we have to think about the larger picture of Chevron deference actually here, because you're subject matter experts, and the court is already stripping away deference to agencies because they're not doing a good job on talking nationally on the state level and whatever. You can show that you're subject matter experts and claw back some of that deference, but through things like oversight of testing labs, very broad point, though. I think open data is a great first step, and I think pushing to have that data un-anonymized is great. Listen, I can go in there and tell you every lab from A to Z because I have the COAs. It's very easy to put together. Just make it public. It's going to become public anyway. You can have a standards lab and open data. I think it's crucial. I think you should have the standards lab internally. There are too many conflicts of interest to outsource this to some kind of nonprofit or an industry actor. There are a lot of good industry actors. It still should be internal. It's easier to hold government accountable than companies or nonprofits. But let's dive into what's actually going on. So you have a great set of regulations related to testing, but what's happening is you have these different forms of testing, plating, which is the industry standard PCR, qPCR, and then these microarray hybridization forms of PCR methodologies. Within the PCR framework, you had something that was being run with one type of methodology, which none of these labs have any incentive to tell you about called the Grim Reefer, where samples were having all of their live and dead DNA killed off and then tested. Of course, they're all going to pass if there is no live dead or dead DNA present. How can you control for the manipulation of those methodologies in real time when the testing labs are doing this and then saying, but we're following the procedure that the companies are telling us to follow? No, they're manipulating it in real time and then trying to hide it. How can you control for it? Be more prescriptive in your regulations. Say this, don't say defer to the companies that produce these testing kits. Say, this is how you must test. We will look at it and then update your regulations as the methodologies update. Regarding AOAC accreditation, you can't defer to them. You have a situation where something may be AOA accredited a methodology for one specific variable, set of variables, and testing labs are using it for the 99 other situations that don't have those exact variables and saying, hey, this methodology is accredited, when it's really not. You have to accredit the methodologies internally, and none of them are going to tell you that. Thanks for my time.
Great. Thanks, Grant. All right, the next person who signed up is Nicholas Masso.
Yes, well, I'll actually be relinquishing my speaking slot today to Oriad Anopolis from A to Z Lab Tours.
Okay.
I'll be upstanding.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And Corey, we do have you a little bit further down the list. Next up is Kevin McKernan. Oh, all right. Corey, do you want to come up now? Sorry about that. Hang on just a second, Kevin.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Corey Adopoulos, and in lieu of the ITL speaking individually today, I'm here to represent the following testing labs in a unified voice. Analytics Labs, Assured Testing, A to Z Laboratories, G7 Lab, Cambium Analytica, Green Analytics, Green Valley Analytics, Mass Biolytics, MCR Labs, Proverdi Laboratories, Safetyva Labs, Smithers, and Indo Laboratories, which is no longer operational. I also want to note that as of Wednesday morning, November 6th, Kagea Labs decided to withdraw from this group after initially participating.
Corey, can I ask you, just interrupt you for a moment? Can you make sure we're speaking loudly into our microphones so everybody can hear you?
Sure. Sorry. Sorry about that. It's also important to note Kagea Labs was part of the framework of this letter that we're presenting here today, and they pulled out yesterday. Just want to make that known.
Okay.
First, we'd like to thank you for holding this public hearing focused on cannabis testing regulations. We see this as a small but critical step in fostering communication between the commission and independent testing laboratories. There are numerous testing-related issues that deserve an in-depth dialogue between the commission and testing labs. These issues include, but are not limited to, standardization of test methods and data reporting, regulatory action limits and analyte lists, integrity and results manipulation, data transparency, accounts receivable, sampling, concerns regarding batch size increases and reduced testing allowances, and respectful scientifically rigorous audits performed by the commission. However, a three-minute speaking limit does not allow for the level of detail that any of these critical issues require. So today, we want to highlight our highest priority: establishing consistent communication between the labs and the commission. We propose, at the very least, monthly meetings between the commission and the labs to address the many pressing issues that demand attention and collaboration. We also urge the commission to actively engage with laboratories on regulatory changes that affect both lab operations and consumer safety. We request the opportunity to provide scientific input on the relevance of regulatory changes. With our extensive expertise in analytical, chemical, and microbiological fields, ITLs are uniquely positioned to support and educate the commission on complex issues that directly impact consumer safety. We ask the commission to play an active role in addressing regulatory deficiencies, drawing on the knowledge, expertise, and experience of the ITLs to improve regulations. But unfortunately, many ITLs have experienced frustration over the adversarial nature of our current relationship with the commission. ITLs to this point have felt that our input is neither valued nor utilized effectively in some instances. ITLs have even encountered unprofessional and retaliatory behavior from commission staff, and we seek respectful interactions during audits, communications, and expressing differing views. We'd again like to point out that three minutes is far too short to adequately address even one of these many critical issues. There's a great deal of discussion required and work to be done, and we're asking you to allow us to help. We can accomplish this through regular meetings and open dialogue. ITLs need a seat at the table in discussing proposed changes to testing, and we should play an active role in shaping regulations that can drive real progress. We need dedicated meetings, not the pageantry of public listening sessions with clients present who may have interests that conflict with public safety. To that end, we respectfully request quarterly meetings between all ITLs and commissioners rotating, monthly meetings between all ITLs and commission staff. What we're suggesting is not unprecedented. We ask the commission to follow the example set previously by the Department of Public Health, as well as following regulators in other states which have regular monthly meetings with ITLs. We urge that the commission recognize the vital role that ITLs play in ensuring consumer safety and product integrity. By establishing regular collaborative communication and addressing the regulatory concerns we've outlined, we believe we can work together to create a more transparent, scientifically rigorous framework that benefits both the industry and the public. We stand ready to share our expertise, engage constructively, and support the commission in these efforts. Thank you for considering our requests and for your commitment to making a safer, more accountable cannabis market in Massachusetts.
Quick question.
Question, Commissioner Rick Martin?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Did you all, the sort of, it seems like you guys formed some kind of coalition per se, or?
The laboratories regularly meet to discuss, you know, issues, topics that come up, you know.
And are you leading that?
I'm part of.
Okay.
Today's purposes.
Today's purposes, yeah.
For today's purposes, I've been nominated by the rest of the group here.
No, that's good. I love it. Also, please send in your testimony.
Absolutely.
We're going to be able to, you know, read that, kind of go through it. But thank you. I'm glad you guys are doing that, because it also helps us. So thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Corey. Couple of requests. Is there a way you could email that testimony? I found it very helpful.
Absolutely.
Mail out to all of us. Secondly, you had mentioned you guys a list of what you have identified, the group has identified as regulatory deficiencies. Could you please put a list together and perhaps expand on why you feel that those are deficient as they are now? That would be helpful to us.
Yep, we be regular. We'd love to meet with you to discuss these things, and we certainly put that together for you.
And if you put it in writing to us, then we can also work with our internal teams and figure out how we can best address these. So that would be helpful, too. But meetings as well. And I have been advocating, I met with you guys maybe a month or two.
Septemberish.
Yeah. And, you know, told you we'd put this today together, and we did. And I've had talks with our staff about having quarterly meetings. I know you just said monthly, but getting regular meetings, consistent meetings off the ground with you guys, with this group as well. Communication is critically important. I agree.
Great. And I would just add to that, yeah. Appreciate you use some of your three minutes going through the litany of labs that you were speaking on behalf of. So certainly want to see the testimony. And, you know, also encourage you to invite us out to see your facilities. I think I'm going to be out in Western Mass next week. Yeah. Going out to Western Mass to visit, I think, Safety then Analytics. So we're happy to get out of the office and see how you all operate and meet the members of your team. So feel free to reach out to us.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Corey. Okay, now Kevin.
You can hear me? Okay. All right.
Yeah, say the licensee or who you're associated with, so we know as well as your name.
Absolutely. Kevin McKernan from Addisimal Genomics. We've been in the field since 2011. We build a lot of the PCR kits that some of the laboratories use here in other states. So our conflict, but I think that conflict's going to give you some, you'll be surprised that what my recommendations are, which are to do different testing and less testing, because I think the testing we have in place today is actually causing all types of negative externalities, which we'll go through. So the, we've sequenced over 1,000, probably 2,000 genomes now that are now up on our website, and anyone can peruse them. But what this information gives you is the complete catalog of all microbes that are in fact on cannabis, and the vast majority of them are in fact harmless. So this is really important to understand in our way, the way that we go about testing for the risks that are on this plant. We should be going after the pathogenic ones and not the harmless ones, because when you go after the harmless ones, you create all types of problems. You induce people to use fungicides. You induce people to decontaminate things with technologies we don't understand that don't end up on the label. You induce laboratory shopping if these things are failing, too many samples that aren't, that aren't in fact harmful. In fact, we are seeing that. The other data we put recently to public, and we want to thank your organization for this and for MCR. We've taken all that data that they've put out, and we put it up on our web server now, so anyone can come through it in a nice interactive visual browser. The public can do this, too. It's very clear from that data that there are 50-fold differences in the total use of mold failure rates between labs. That's, that's an outlier across the entire country. 50-fold. There are people that have 0.24% failure rates, people that have 13% failure rates. I'm not going to point out who's right or who's wrong, but that gap is larger than any gap in the entire country. All right. So there's something clearly wrong there. Now, we have grows in the state that have compete with the hemp market who has no testing. So I don't blame them for running after the labs that have low fail rates. They're on their economic, they're painted into economic corner here. What I think we should do is harmonize our regulations with neighboring states. New York doesn't even test for this. Connecticut has a 10-fold higher rate for total use of mold, and to compensate for that, they put in pathogenic testing, looking for Asperger's, and if that's the right move. The reason I think that's the right move is what Grant had raised, is that Chevron is going to eviscerate all of these laws, if they are in fact not based on scientific merit. And none of the tests that we do looking for collections of microbes have any scientific merit. They just don't. You can't put them through Koch's postulates, which means you isolate the organism. We infect another organism to see that it recapitulates disease. And if you can't do that, you can't declare a pathogen to be pathogenic. Therefore, you'll find no clinical literature suggesting 10,000 CFUs of total use of mold is harmful, while 9,000 is not. It doesn't exist. So the grows are going to sue people, and they're going to win off that alone. They're already winning in some other states. I don't think they're necessarily winning on the right cause. I think that the tests that we need are tests that go after pathogens that can satisfy Koch's postulates. That way, we have clinical literature that supports those tests. That way, we have, we have CDC backing for those tests. We do not have that for total growth counts. We don't have it for total use of mold, and we don't have it for a lot of the other enumeration tests that we have in the market. So our advice is to revisit this, perhaps in phases, harmonize the regulations so that the total use of mold testing is more like New York and Connecticut. That will lower the fail rates. That will lower the lab shopping pressure that's going on, and it'll give us some time to maybe think about what other microbes we should be testing for that we can support with clinical literature. So thank you.
Kevin, thank you for that. You talked about Connecticut.
Yes.
Can you get a little more specific, like briefly?
So Connecticut has 100,000 CFUs. We have 10,000 here. When it's at 10,000 here, you can see lab shopping in the data. You can see the grows are moving to labs that have lower total use of mold failure rate. You don't see that migration happening off E. coli and seminole testing because the fail rate is too low to matter. In Connecticut and other states that have 100,000 CFUs, the fail rate collapses down to around 3 or 4%. And that is, doesn't induce as much lab shopping. And I think that's probably more reasonable because we can't stand behind whether 100,000 or 10,000 is going to harm people. whether 100,000 or 10,000 is going to harm people. We can get behind them with E. coli, Salmonella, and Aspergillus, because there's papers showing that those things actually have.
E. coli, Salmonella, and Aspergillus.
Yes.
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 Right.
Now, AOAC is pushing on a couple other microbes that haven't made it into the state yet. They're looking at Listeria, which is probably more of a kitchen risk than it is. We don't find that much in the database of what sits on the plant, but it can be introduced externally in the cooking procedures. And there's other pathologists in the field I'd point you to. Zamir Pundja is very good on this, but they're finding other species like Penicilliums and Pterinums that create mycotoxins that might be a concern. And those are actually, we do see those in the database. They're frequently found, and they're all over the fields throughout the country.
Know what Rhode Island is doing? Do you have any hand on?
Rhode Island? I think they're at 100,000, maybe a lab testing thing here. Someone would know better. We do have another website on our page that points all that out, the regulations by state. They have been changing a little bit, so we might be a little bit dated on this, but Maryland and Michigan have also gone to 100,000 CFUs on total use of mold, but when they do this, they sometimes put in Aspergillus testing, but not everyone does. New York didn't.
Yeah, and Maryland has a reference lab, Sanders Lab.
They do.
And I don't know if Michigan, Michigan might, Michigan went to standardization.
We're going to build one. I think they're planning to in California as well. The only caution I would throw in there is when you build a standards lab, the standards lab has to run every technology. Otherwise, it will become a regulatory capture event. Whatever technology they choose to run, all the labs will be forced to switch to that. And then you create a monopoly on who actually provides your state with the testing through the testing companies. So it's more difficult. You've got to build a lab that can run all the different protocols that people have, so you have a good, you have a fair view of what's producing which data. But what we've seen in other states is they open up, they open a lab like this, they bring in someone like Agilent, and suddenly everyone has to switch to Agilent because they're the only.
Yeah, I was wondering, does the state impose standardization?
I will probably defer to those labs that are doing this. It's so new in our field that I don't actually know what's going on in California. They've only built this for a part of the testing out there. I think they're first focusing on pesticides. They're beginning to do it for the microbial's. But I don't know of a state that's actually pulled it off to completion. It takes time and expertise to build that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Next up is Jonathan Ferguson, and then on deck would be Ryan Dominguez. So, is Jonathan here?
I'm ceding my time, I'm ceding my time to have a strong unified voice with the rest of the labs.
Okay.
I would urge the commission to consider the points that Corey made, as well as Kevin. Standardization and methods is going to do a great deal to help eliminate the lab shopping issue we have in the state.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Ryan Dominguez from Mass Cannabis Coalition.
Morning, commissioners. Ryan Dominguez, Massachusetts Cannabis Coalition. I want to say thank you to the commissioners for hosting this listening session, for inviting the testing labs, as well as the industry to provide their feedback on our testing program. I think it's definitely time for us to take a second look at our testing program and just reevaluate some of the impacts that we thought were going to happen when we first implemented them, that would actually happened. And I think that is something that many of us will agree upon, whether we're testing labs or whether we're in the licensee kind of market. First, I want to say I support all the testing labs in having quarterly, monthly meetings with all of you as the CCC. I think it's really important to have their viewpoint heard as we're thinking about wholesale changes to the program. But with that said, I also want to say that we've been working with testing labs, and we have a few testing labs as part of our association. And while we may not agree on every point, and sometimes the industry can kind of put us at odds, we've found that there are some commonalities that we can't agree upon. Some of the things that we don't necessarily agree upon are reduced testing allowance or increasing the batch size requirements. But at the same time, we're looking at things like changing the total yeast and mold, the total anaerobic bacteria testing, and try to make that more species-specific. I think the whole industry can get behind that. In a similar way, we're looking at some of our limits. If you look at the residual solvent limits that we have, as well as some of the pesticide limits. I know the previous testifier mentioned some other states and how high their limits are for total use of mold. If you look at our residual solvent limits as well as our pesticide limits, that is in the same way, kind of 10-fold compared to some of the other states. I think we're at 15 parts per billion or million. I'm sorry, I don't really know the science behind it, but for our residual solvent limits and 10 PBB or parts per million for our pesticide limits, and please correct me, testing lab, if I have that wrong. But I think that's definitely something that we should look at. It could save licensees some funding, as well as kind of make us in line with some of the other states that are creating their testing programs based on new research and data that's coming out every day. And I think we're connected in a similar way within this industry. In the same way that we're facing AR issues, the testing labs are now seeing that as well. And if we can figure out changes around the testing program to save some licensees some money, but while keeping consumer safety, I think the whole industry will benefit, and you'll see some downstream effects where testing labs will not have to deal with the same kind of AR issues as well. And then I want to end my comments by saying that the legislature is also looking at the testing program. I think last year they were trying to put together a bill for data transparency, and I know that's something that they want to prioritize going into the next session as well. So in the same way that you all are thinking about that on the regulatory level, I think if there is support that's needed from the legislature, they're more than willing to do so.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good question. Ryan, what labs are a part of your association?
Yeah, so we have SafeTiva Labs, which is going to be putting her up for our board seat. And then we have a couple others, and happy to bring you into our testing subcommittee to show you some of the other folks that are part of them.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you, Ryan. And I just, for those who didn't watch our meeting last week, and you might already know this, we tackled regs. We did some more updates to the regulations around delivery, micro businesses, telehealth. But I want to thank my colleagues because we really wanted to make sure B2B was included and not just B2C. And that, you know, I think there's, out of the 13 operating labs, four of you have vehicles. And it was required, I know Megan has spoken up many times on this, that there was two agents required. So after November, well, 8th will be promulgated, and they kick in November 22nd, you'll be able to go down to one agent in your vehicle. And so that's, you know, that's a helpful step in the right direction as well. So I just, for those that weren't aware, I just wanted to make you aware.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Roy, and commissioners for pushing that board. I think that was a really great step for our testing labs.
Great. Thank you, Ryan.
Great. Thanks, Ryan. Okay, we will now take a quick recess while we flip over to some of the folks that are testifying remotely. And once we wrap up our remote participants, we'll switch back, see if anybody else in the room would like to offer any testimony or comments or thoughts before we wrap up.
And before the recess, Ryan, you brought up batch sizing. And we had that listening session in Great Barrington with the outdoor cultivators. And we heard one side of the argument to increase it, but for anyone that's going to provide testimony today, or anybody that'd like to around batch sizing, I'm curious, and I would like to hear it, if anybody has any thoughts.
This is the current version. I'm starting.
Is there a phone?
Yes.
Yep, we'll do that. We'll do that. We're going to switch the, all the people that signed up in advance. So we're going to switch the remote folks, and then we'll come back and finish up with anybody who's joined us in person. So we'll take a five-minute recess while we get the remote testimony ready to go. And we'll be right back. Thank you.
I'm going to be there.
All set. All right. Okay, I have a number of folks who have signed up to participate and offer testimony remotely. Again, just a reminder for those testifying remotely. Invite you to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Certainly, anything you want to submit to us in writing, you are welcome to do that. Just when I call your name, introduce yourself and the organization or entity that you represent. And I'm gonna start with Sean Murphy. Sean, are you with us?
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank the commission for allowing me to speak briefly for a moment. Our local union represents approximately 12,000 workers in Massachusetts across many industries. Last October, workers at Ketchel Labs formed their union and started contract negotiations with the company. Now, a major concern for this industry is health and safety. United workers are afforded many protections for union contracts, including health and safety measures. Historically, union workers work in much safer environments. The union and the company work together to ensure high safety standards are back because that workers have a voice in that workplace. I am hopeful that Ketchel Labs will do the right thing and finish the contract for the hardworking employees. The union looks forward to working together with the company to ensure these labs are safe. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions for Sean? All right. Thanks, Sean. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, I'll go through the list. Is Tracy Scott with us? Yeah. All right. Jeff Rossin. Okay. I have Cheryl Fitzer Addis. Not logged in. Okay. Kathy Ziegler. Okay. Sherman Horn. Okay. Adam Sintas. Okay. Edward Taveras. All right. And Kevin Middleton. Okay. All right. We can take a brief pause. We'll flip the room back to live hearing in person. And get through the few remaining names of folks that signed up just this morning. But obviously, anybody here in the room, anybody who had signed up to participate remotely can certainly send in their thoughts to the email address that I provided at the top of the meeting, but certainly appreciate their interest and we hope to hear from all of them. All right, we'll take a shorter recess. Commissioner Kamara?
Before Commissioner Stevens and Commissioner Roy, I think it'll be good for the record, maybe before we go on break, because there are a lot of folks in the room, but not everybody's testifying because I think they're broken up into groups, but it would be nice for, for the record, if people are okay with it, to say their name and what lab they represent or they're with. It would be nice.
We invite them to do that.
Yeah. Oh, perfect. Awesome. Before people leave, you know?
Yep. Okay. We'll take a three-minute recess. Or two-minute recess as soon as we can flip the room back over to the in-person portion of the meeting. But thank you again, Sean. So we'll take a three-minute recess and flip the room back over. Thanks, Bessie. All right, we are reconvening. We will go back to folks who signed up this morning, invite them up to offer their thoughts and testimony. We'll start with Richard Su from Harbor House Collective. Richard, how are you? And following Richard will be Lucas Thayer. Morning, Richard.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is Richard Su. I'm the chief compliance officer and co-founder at Harbor House Collective in Chelsea, Massachusetts. We are a medical marijuana treatment center as well as an adult-use retailer. I'm here to kind of throw my support behind what you've already heard from the ITL so far this morning. There's definitely a couple of issues that are near and dear to our heart. The first of which is that we are very, very proud of how safe and accessible the products in Massachusetts are, very due in part to the infrastructure that is our ITLs. It's very alarming that there is instability in the infrastructure due to things such as accounts receivable. That is a rampant issue in much of the industry, but it's extra alarming to us that it's happening to labs. That is a facilitator of, you know, the will of our commission and the industry, so it's surprising that that is affected by that. So I would like to raise that alarm and also just in general. The other thing is, I believe Ryan had mentioned the residual solvent limits. Just to expand on what he was discussing, the current limit right now for things such as hydrocarbons, butanes, propanes is 12 parts per million right now. The next closest state is Maine at 500 parts per million, which is about 41 times higher than what we have. Michigan's at 800 parts per million, Colorado at 5,000 parts per million. So any very like incremental increase to what our standards are would be a great benefit to not just testing costs, but it's actually directly affecting the medicinal value of the products that we're making. Industry standard methods for purging hydrocarbons directly contribute to the degradation and removal of beneficial compounds such as terpenes, terpenoids, flavonoids. And we, you know, we've seen rounds of purging. We'll see through testing and R and D testing that we lose a lot of these medicinal compounds. So I think that revisiting our methodology for this limit that we've set would definitely be a service to the patients of this state in getting safe, accessible, and effective medicine. And I do want to say that there is much research on the positive effects of the terpenes and the entourage effect, and there is limited research on what vaporizing or ingesting butane beyond eating it would really pose as far as risks. So as far as revisiting how we're doing testing and how we're regulating testing, I do think that is one aspect that should be revisited. Thank you.
Questions? Go ahead, Commissioner.
And thank you so much, Richard, for that. And you brought up, I think you talked about remediation, or I want to just talk about that for a second. And any input or feedback at how prevalent you think it is, are samples being remediated before they get into your custody? And should it be on labeling? I think the BADA took steps to put, if a product is remediated, on labeling. I think Connecticut has as well. So just anybody that wants to offer any thoughts around if you think that's happening where the batch in your custody has been remediated, and so it's not really indicative of the, the sample's been remediated, it's not indicative of the entire batch. So it's just some thoughts I had. I'm curious of any feedback you could provide.
I think that's secondary to the microbial perform. If we change those limits or eliminate yeast and mold and go towards speciation, we're not going to see as much remediation. We're not going to see the need for remediation.
I might come up here. Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Oh, come, come up, come up. Sorry to interrupt. You feel that it's folks are remediating because of the overly prescriptive thresholds. That's what you feel. Okay. And remind us your name and what that?
John Ferguson with Green Valley Analytics.
Thank you, John.
You know, we go back and watch these things. That's why it's helpful for us, yeah.
And then that gives us license to bother you by email. So.
Did I say Green Valley? I meant trade him.
All right. Next up is Lucas Thayer. And then the next person who signed up after that was Danny Carson. So Danny, you're on deck.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for hosting a specified panel to talk about this subject. It's a very important subject. The Boston Globe wrote about this subject being a problem. I think maybe in the future, we should have these panels before the Boston Globe, but the Boston Globe is writing about how we're doing something wrong. If we, if we, as an industry, know that there's a problem, which is lab shopping, the one we're talking about today, we should be on it a little better with that. More, more discussion groups like this, please. Also, more generalized discussion groups so we can have overarching topics discussed, not just specified ones. Also, we should have more discussion groups like this on social equity. Social equity applicants should have their testing fees waived at these labs. If they need a subsidy or something, then they should be paid for by the Social Equity Trust Fund, which has millions and millions of dollars that we don't know what to do with it yet. So social equity, economic empowerment, that whole list of those small businesses disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs should be given a hand up, not a hand out, in this industry in the testing. The cost of testing is very, very high. The cost of testing goes on to the cost of the joint. If the joint is more than $10, people go to the guy on the street. People go and buy illegal weed on the street still. If we're doing testing because of health and safety, if we want health and safety in the Commonwealth, then we should do stuff to make the cost of the joint less, make the cost of production less, and make the cost of getting it tested less. I agree with a lot of my colleagues that just said that those thresholds need to be increased from 10,000 to 100,000. I'm not a super sciency guy, but I agree that those thresholds need to be increased. The apples I just gave you, anyone that owns a lab, that owns those machines, please take the apple back to your lab and test it at the lab. Get back to me on what that comes back. I don't think it's going to have any THC, but the mold will be way beyond what you would allow cannabis to contain. Now, people say you don't smoke the apple, but you smoke out of the apple. So anyway, the, the cost of producing, especially, especially with outdoor, the cost of producing top buds that don't contain any mold is basically prohibitive for outdoor cultivators. We also need to look at the, the lab shopping for the THC percentage. There's all these different labs that are giving way varied results in the THC percentage, and also, as you said, people are remediating the samples before they're sending it off. That needs to be regulated somehow. But then at the consumer level, when a consumer goes to buy weed at the store, they should be able to open up the container and look at it and smell it. Because in the olden days, when we would go to the guy, they would offer us a bunch of different samples, and then we would look at eight different samples and smell it and say, oh, that's the best one. I want that. And that experience is really lacking in the marketplace, not only in this state, but put in others. And so if, again, if we want people to leave the guy, go to the store, then the store should be allowed and encouraged to have touchable, smellable samples of the products that they can look at and really determine the quality of that product before they make their decision to purchase it. They shouldn't be behind it. The test results on the TV screen, I don't care. If I go to the dispensary to buy a joint, I say, which one of these companies is the smallest business? I buy based on how big their business is, not the THC percentage at all. I don't care if it's a Teva or Indica. I care if it's a smaller business. But a lot of people are just results shopping when they're going to buy their joints, but those results are fabricated. All you guys, all these guys will tell you that the results are fabricated and shopped for, and so they're really trying to get those, those high THC numbers artificially so that people can sell their weed so that they come back to them. So I think I've got more, more than my time. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Your point in the beginning, where you were talking about the article and the Boston Globe and the, what were, what was your suggestion? You were saying that, okay, that.
Well, in general, not, I mean, in, in the testing issue, it's already kind of the cat's out of the bag, that the public, if the, if the Boston Globe is writing about it, then the public says, hey, this is a problem. But if we internally, as an industry, knows that there's a problem, then we can kind of work together on solving these problems. And if we go to these other detailed subjects, like these listening sessions are very good. And the more of those that we have, these listening sessions and conversations that we have, and I know it costs the commission money to post these meetings and stuff, and I don't want you to have a meeting every day, but more frequent meetings on all of these subject matters that are issues, I think would allow us as an industry to preemptively solve our problems before the Boston Globe is saying, hey, look at how these fools are running a bad industry. Like, because that's what the stigma people, the anti-cannabis stigma people are pointing to our testing issue or some of the other issues. So.
I appreciate that. That makes, no, 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 that makes.
And not something you guys did, not something these guys did, just something that we can do in the future.
And I think to Commissioner, you know, Commissioner Roy said it in the beginning, right, and Commissioner Stevens will talk about it more, I think, next month or something, but we're gonna try to have these regularly because there needs to be more communication, like, this is awkward, right? You guys are sitting there, you gotta come testify. Like, I wish we were all sitting in a round table and just having a conversation with the regs. Right, with the regs in front of us, right, kind of going through them. So I think that, you know, I think even for us as a commission, we gotta think about how do we, how do we do regulatory changes differently? And conversation. I always say this, none of us up here are business owners, right? We're not, we're not in your seats out there. So I, I do, I thank you for that because it allows us to rethink how we do business here and how we have these conversations. So I think this is great. And I know that my colleagues, I think we're rethinking, you know, quarterly meetings and hosting these and having conversations because, I mean, we each have 200 emails, you know? And yeah, do we read them? Yeah, at some point, we're gonna read them all, but this is more helpful, I think, to be able, and then to have our team in the back, right? Who is gonna, you know, debrief us and educate us, you know, afterwards. So I just thank you for saying that and thank you for kind of breaking it down. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I like coming here and talking to you guys. These folks do too.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and thank you, Lucas. And you come to a lot of our meetings and you always supply us with nice, healthy apples. So thank you for that. You mentioned about the smelling of the product in the, so I, I know some licensees have got creative with that, and I had the opportunity to visit Stam and Havel, and she really got, she's creative, unique setup there where you can smell them all. She has a, you pull it off, she's got a board and you pull it and you're able to smell all of that products. I think a lot of, I've seen some visits where they have deli style and you can really see the flower. You can really not touch it because I don't think that would be allowed, but you are able to see it. So I think some progress, short of being able to pick up the flower and put it in your hands, smell it. There are some steps being made to make the shopping.
On-site sampling at the dispensaries?
What's that?
On-site sampling at the dispensaries, perhaps?
You know, it's, it's, it's a good point, and I have visited, I think it was in South Springfield, that, you know, you could see the product, you get.
Boston Bud Factory. There might be another one in Springfield, but Boston Bud Factory, shout out to my buddy Frank over there.
But you touched on another subject, which we're going, gonna be talking about next month, but as I've talked to retail dispensaries, it's not about just somebody coming in, buying their product for social consumption, as we're talking, and then going into another room and be like, we're done. I've talked to licensees who were like, I want to find an opportunity to educate people about using cannabis, cannabis products, and doing that and thinking about it in the, in context of the social consumption license. Thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you. As, as a commission, y'all could also educate the consumer base on why THC numbers being higher don't necessarily mean it's better weed. It's not necessarily your, your job to educate the public, but you have an audience as the, the consumer base, and I frequently see these, don't drive and smoke on Halloween type of messages. But another one's saying, don't look at the THC numbers while you're buying only because there's other really valuable pieces of information.
Right. The terpenes and the, what's the desired effect, right?
Someone else has some time.
Yeah, I, I just have a comment to make. It's someone, it's not with your testimony, Lucas, so thank you.
But someone brought up hemp, and I think it might have been, Corey, somebody did about intoxicating hemp. Yeah, you're good. Thank you. And I had the opportunity to testify on behalf of the commission in front of the legislature about intoxicating hemp. And I've spoke publicly many times that in, because that's what they, maybe you said it, Corey, that it's your whole cannabis industry is held to a different standard around testing. And then we have these intoxicating hemp products. And I call it gas station weed and a public menace at the time. And I truly mean it because, and I want to thank Ryan and Chris, who provided me information on my testimony. And Chris coined or gave me the term that after testing thousands of these, there are unidentifiable compounds referred to as franginoids in these, in this, you know, intoxicating hemp. So, you know, if I had a magic wand, I, and, and these are, and I, and I have admiration for hemp farmers, right? But there was a loophole in the farm bill, and here we find ourselves, you know, if there are going to be intoxicating hemp products, they need to be tested by all and they need to be sold in our dispensaries in the regulated market, not at gas stations with no H gate, not in little package stores or not, you know. So that's my thoughts on that. And it just came back to me because somebody had mentioned that it's really not a level playing field before the, between the two. And I want you to know that I will continue to advocate. In the, I'm thankful to the administration and DPH, they did take steps and had these products, consumable products removed. So that's a good first step. But I think it's unfair to you, all of you, and anyone in the regulated market, that these products are able to exist the way they do. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next person we have signed up is Danny Carson. Welcome, Danny.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me time to speak to you all today. My name is Danny Carson. I'm a former cannabis worker, cannabis consumer, and co-founder of the Coalition for Cannabis Worker Safety here in Massachusetts. I'm here to shed light on an urgent and growing health issue affecting both workers and consumers in the cannabis industry. Just last week, during an investigation of a grow facility in Massachusetts called the Heirloom Collective, I encountered extremely alarming findings. After receiving a complaint from a worker experiencing respiratory issues due to suspected mold contamination problems in the facility, I decided to invest further. I purchased a pre-roll from the Heirloom Collective from a licensed dispensary, and I sent it unopened to Proverde Labs for testing, and the results were shocking. This single pre-roll contained 50 times the legal limit for mold in Massachusetts. That's nearly half a million colony-forming units. Half a million colony-forming units of mold that I, as a consumer, was able to purchase. This is still on the market today. So how does this happen? How does a product who initially passed testing only to show dangerously high levels of mold later on? Well, let me tell you, because I got the original certificate of analysis from the Heirloom Collective, and Ketchum Labs is one who tested them initially. And they have in effect put both workers and consumer lives at risk for falsely passing contaminated products. It was tested not two months ago. This is not an isolated issue. This is not the first time that these kind of findings have been found in this state. And this is not the first time that the commission has heard about it either. Mold contamination is a pervasive and silent issue in this industry. It puts workers' health at risk, leaving consumers exposed to potentially toxic products. And without rigorous and honest testing from our labs, mold and contamination issues remain hidden and increasingly severe over time, potentially costing lives. Imagine for a moment working in a small room with no ventilation or air filtration, grinding cannabis that you're told has met all safety standards that there's about, is about to be sold at a dispensary. In reality, however, it's failed for mold and toxins. And now imagine the air quality in that space. It's not surprising, given these conditions, that many cultivators and producers in these facilities see multiple emergency calls every year. Proverde Labs is currently conducting further testing on it to identify toxins present in the mold that we can see, you know, is it aspergillus? Is it, what exactly is in this? And when I get those results, I'll provide them to the commission. But we must hold testing facilities accountable and implement more stringent, reliable testing standards to protect the health and workers and the health and consumers. The lives of these workers, as we know from Lorna McMurray's passing, are at risk. This was a problem for True Leave as well. And it can be found through the testing data that they had severe mold issues and hide their problems behind a lab that they could basically pay off. Consumers are at risk, and so are workers. So thank you for your time for listening to this today.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you, Danny. And it's my understanding, did you know Lorna? Did you work with Lorna?
I hired her for a job at True Leave, ma'am, yes.
Sorry. That, and we need to learn from that and how we make the industry. It's a newer industry and how we can make it safer. And I know that it takes multi, multi-agency collaborative effort. And I know other states are looking at cannabis dust, particulate in the air, if that's an occupational hazard. I think we all can do more to understand it and to learn about that. But I appreciate your courage today to share that with us. I'm sure it wasn't easy. We had a discussion and we're establishing a tip line for folks who find out information like you, but might not feel comfortable sharing it, like you just did in a public setting. I'm hopeful by the end of the year, we will have that up solely dedicated tip line for information, like, you know, you just shared. So thank you so much, and I appreciate your testimony today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it, Danny. Thank you. Those were all the folks that had signed up in advance, either to testify in person or remotely or wanted to offer testimony and signed up this morning. Happy to invite anybody else might be in the room who did not sign up. You're welcome to come up at this time, introduce yourself, your name, the organization you represent, and offer any testimony that you wish.
You wanted people from the labs just to identify themselves earlier?
Yes. If we can actually go around the room, happy to have. If you haven't been recognized or you didn't come up to speak, but you want to stand and be identified, we welcome you to do that. You know, we can kind of go row by row. Second row, I know that's Lucas and Danny. Third row, gentlemen.
I've already spoken, but John Ferguson with Green Valley Analytics.
Chris Adal with Proverde Laboratories.
James Roche with Green Analytics.
Good.
Corey Adopoulos with AZ.
Good.
And Masso, I'm the former CEO and owner of Indo Laboratories in Marlborough, which is no longer. Now, we have this development executive for H Labs.
Okay, thank you.
Tom Lorish at Testing Labs.
Peter Iannucci, Proverde Labs.
Michael Khan, MCR Labs.
Andrew Burke, MCR Labs.
Next row.
Tiffany Madru, Analytics Labs.
Ted Madru, Analytics Labs.
Victor Magletta with Medicinal Genomics.
Eric Steele, Smithers.
Megan Dobro of Safetyva.
Kevin McCurnan, Medicinal Genomics.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Tom Curd from G7.
Anybody else? Dave, you're kind of quiet. Want to say hello?
Sure, David O'Brien from Mass Campus.
Got everybody, I think. All right. Anybody else like to come up and offer any thoughts? You're welcome to.
Any other topics or thoughts?
This thing is worth noting that all of the labs have come together for this. We form meetings, as Corey has said, every two weeks, we meet regularly. But we have every single lab in the state that is asking for some change. And I think that's really carries a lot of weight.
I have a question for all of you.
I think to add to that, we've made a decision as a group to stick with Corey's letter, but we have lots of information we'd like to share. We love the idea of you coming to our labs. Informal groups, like Commissioner Kamaru said, we have lots of information that we can share and a lot of ideas that can effectuate positive change.
Commissioner Roy.
I just have a question for feedback on the potency, on the quantifying potency memo. And I know we had to make adjustments to that memo. How has that been going? Like, is there, be honest, any thoughts around? I want to hear. Michael. If people want to share.
If people want to share.
Yep.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll, I'll also just say too, though, for reminding your name. You, yeah.
John.
John, thank you, John. And Corey, right, over here? Yeah. So I just want to say thank you for organizing and getting together because I think one of the things that I realize in this industry is that, you know, it's collaborative, even though you guys are all competitors. But the only way that you are going to be able to help the commission is to really come together and give us those, you know, give us that feedback. So I'm glad that you guys are organizing and having your meetings. It may be time-consuming for you all, but I think it's helpful for us. If any of you saw our regulatory conversation, you know, a week and a half ago, you know, we're up here talking to each other, having questions, you know, asking the audience questions. So, you know, in order to create these policies, we really have to work together, and you're not going to get everything. Right? You're not going to get it all. But we gotta, we gotta figure it out. And I, I always say this, you know, we're the second cohort of commissioners. You know, so we're taking these existing regs and looking at what worked, what hasn't worked, and how do we kind of change some things? The other thing I'll say too, and I've said this since the first day I got here, y'all should consider coming to work for the commission or applying to be a commissioner at some point. I know there's like nodding of heads. But I, I say that because I'm always, you know, I'm always thinking about talent and recruiting the bench and, you know, especially folks that are out in the industry. We come and go, you know, these are appointed seats. But for many of you, you're going to be here in this industry for a very long time. So I just want to say that because I know that there's so much expertise out there. And, you know, I want to make sure that you guys have that open invitation. But yeah, I look forward to more conversation. And I know we just had an outdoor cultivation conversation. We've had this one. You know, I'll, I'll tell you guys some just background information, like, we go back and then individually as commissioners have conversations with our team. We debrief, you know, so what did you hear? You know, what, what's really happening? How are we, how do we figure this out? And then on December 5th, we're going to have a presentation around social consumption. We're going to unveil what social consumption looks like in Massachusetts. And, you know, that's going to open another sort of regulatory conversation. But, you know, we all have to kind of go back and we can't talk to each other sometimes, you know, we gotta talk in public. But we gotta figure out what does the next regulatory round look like and what issues and topics are we going to tackle individually as commissioners and with our team. So, you know, I'm just, I'm, I'm really grateful that you all are here today and that you're pushing. I always say to people, like, you know, don't yell at me, just, just be transparent, like, just be forward, you know what I mean? Like, I've gotten some real disrespectful emails. Me too. And I, I can't function like that. So to me, it's like, please email us, be straightforward, push us, call us, don't feel like you're, you know, oh, I don't want to send an email, like, keep doing it. You, you will get an answer from us and it's, it's good to hear from you all. So I just wanted to say that, and I, I really appreciate it. It makes my job easier. So, thank you. And if I can just echo that, and you could look at the delivery operators as an example for your group, because for four years, they, they really got together. They banded together pretty quick out of the gate, and they, they identified the problems. And, you know, it had to be two agents, or there was not going to be, be a delivery license type, is my understanding. But they really did a great job, very respectful way, and like today, super respectful and great conversation and dialogue. And they finally saw the fruits of their labor, was it last week? We did it last week. So they saw the fruits of their labor come together after four years of frustration and hard work. And, and so I just look to them as a great example, and you're doing that now. And it, and it's government, and it doesn't happen overnight. I came from the private sector, and I'm used to things a certain way, and it's government. It can be really frustrating, but hang in there with us and just keep this, this constructive dialogue, keep it going with us. And we are all committed to making positive changes in this industry, as long as they don't compromise public health or public safety. And that's kind of my rule and my barometer. So if you can demonstrate to us where changes need to be made without compromising those pillars, then I'm all ears. So thank you for today.
Yeah. I can say ditto and ditto. You know, the, the regulatory part, first of all, is somebody who came from regulating another industry in Massachusetts. But we had the benefit in my old job of 30 somewhat other jurisdictions already had gaming. Right? It was a lot of just cut and paste from what other jurisdictions are doing. This is still new. And if you recall, it wasn't that long ago, the Massachusetts was the only one used to the Mississippi to be doing medical and adult use. The industry is growing, the industry is entrepreneurial. We want to be able to respond to that. But the work we did on the most recent set of regs was, wasn't just all of your input. But we have a variety of stakeholders that we feel we need to walk through potential changes to make other folks who are watching this industry and watching what we're doing, comfortable with the approach. When we talk about going from two agents down to one agent. Early on, that was a big issue for the public safety community. We had to use documentation. We had to use the records that we could show to say that there were no major incidents involving people delivering cannabis, getting harmed, getting put in harm's way, being in a dangerous situation. So as, as much as we enjoy this conversation, and I do, and it's helpful, I'm also a person of the sentiment that the foundation that our inaugural set of commissioners laid out is conservative might not be the right word, but obviously, trying to take every step they could to be prescriptive and protect those public health and safety pillars, as Commissioner Roy said. I would rather, as a regulator, find myself that, in that environment, and talking about ways that we can look at things that we no longer need or are no longer useful and start to remove some of the, similar to what we did with two agents. I would hate for all of us to be in the room right now and us having to talk to you about another layer of regulations that we had to throw on top and another layer, so that it takes away the stability of how you, how you all operate. I mean, you're all operating under the guidelines that were originally laid out. It does, I would hope, it does give you, you know, at least some level of confidence about how you go about and do the work. But that's the conversation I want to continue to have. I also know that we have an incredible team, a lot of them represented in the back. They've been living and breathing these regs, some of them going on six years. I actually want to have a conversation with them to see what still works, which, what doesn't work, what's still appropriate, what isn't appropriate. And, you know, to Commissioner Kamargo, talking about other regulatory changes. If you've heard me in a public meeting, badges is kind of at the top of my list. Obviously, you guys are all, you know, single licensees, but badging does become an issue for the rest of the industry. Bringing up cash for them maybe helps them keep up with, you know, any outstanding accounts receivable that they might have with you. But these are the conversations that we're beginning to have, that we're going to continue to have into the next year. But to Commissioner Roy's point, don't feel this is a one and done conversation. We want to keep the conversation going. And greatly appreciate all of you for taking the time out of your work schedule and your busy schedules to make the trip into Worcester and participate. So we value that as well and understand what a sacrifice that is. So, a less. Commissioner Roy.
Well, you said something that, that got me.
Okay, go ahead.
So to your point with me, and, you know, you've looked to other jurisdictions, and I want you to know that, you know, I'm open to looking at what other jurisdictions are doing. And we did that in the delivery operator regulations, the B to C, because we looked at what Connecticut was doing, and it was zero to 5,000. You could have one agent. If you're over $5,000, then you have to go to two agents, and that, that was lifted from Connecticut. So I am more than willing to look at Connecticut to see what they are doing, as well as Michigan and Maryland, some other jurisdictions. Just because we were first, doesn't make, doesn't always mean that we have the best plan, and maybe we do. But I am willing to look at what other jurisdictions are doing.
I would echo that. And that's the value of our participation in KARA. That's the value of our just conversation. That's the value of our just conversations that we continue to have, not only on testing issues, but other industry issues. Um, last call, anybody else?
Get a group photo with all the testing lab people and you guys.
Sure. Completely, yeah, so you want to be interested with that? I think that's the question we're going to start with. Um, Commissioner Kamargo, anything else?
No, I'm just very grateful.
Yeah.
All right. Um, seeing no other business, um, we do have some meetings coming up. Our regular business meeting is next Thursday, the fourteenth. Uh, as Commissioner Kamargo pointed out, December fifth, we will be rolling out uh, our social consumption regulatory framework. And December twelfth will be our last business meeting right now of the year. Um, and at December's meeting, December twelfth's meeting, we'll be rolling out our calendar of meetings next year, which I hope will also include regularly scheduled meeting for more policy discussions amongst us, our team. Um, but again, just want to thank you all for coming into town, spending a couple hours with us. Uh, I think probably on behalf of the city of Worcester, I should tell you to go out and spend some money locally for lunch. Um- But greatly, greatly appreciate everybody's time today. Thank you again, and looking forward to more conversations.
Commissioner Stebbins, I was just going to say, and thank you to everyone who's online. We've had over a hundred and fifty people throughout the hearing online.
Oh, watching, that's fantastic.
That's great.
We have to adjourn.
You're good? Okay, all right. Seeing no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second, Commissioner Roy?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further comments or discussion? Seeing done, roll call vote, Commissioner Kamargo, Commissioner Roy.
Aye.
And I vote aye as also three in favor, not opposed. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.